Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call this informational meeting of Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, to order. Welcome to those in the audience, those watching on television or online. First, we're going to start with committee and commission reports. First is a Siouxland Heritage Museum Board, and I believe Counselor Starr has that report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. I always like to start with the great news is that the museum system received $150,000 donation to the foundation that the group has. So the total in the foundation is roughly 1.8 million, and that is housed at the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. The other thing that we spent some time talking about as a council as well was the new closed-circuit TV cameras for the exterior of the new resource building have been ordered and waiting for county facilities and their IT department to get those in place. There's been some mischief around that building and being out in the middle of nowhere and being not lit up as well without a lot of things around it. So that was a big deal, getting those going. The other is that there are a few programs and rentals on the horizon, which is a big part of how the museum funds its enterprise fund and then the education programs that it does. And so, as with everyone else, they're very limited. The ones that are scheduled have low numbers, less than 25% of the room capacity, and they'll be well spaced out with more than six foot of distance. But again, some of those are canceling as they become closer, too. So that's going to put a major impact on the budget. So those are the couple of things. And the museum staff has had its first employee with a COVID-positive case and some people that have some testing. So again, that makes some difference. What's been interesting and great for the system is that they've become very creative in how they're able to do programming with schools and things. So with them not able to come to the museum, how to do some of those on-site, teaching the staff Zoom. The new resource facility or building has the technology to do some of those type of programming that they can't do in person at this point. So those are the highlights of what's going on at the museums.
Thank you very much. And before I move on to the next report, I do want to circle back. I should have confirmed who we had in attendance on the phone. So I'm just, we have five here in person, and I'm just going to check with the other three counselors. And if you could just confirm your attendance, that would be great. Counselor Brecky.
Here.
Counselor Kylie. And Counselor Sale.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So it looks like we just have Counselor Kylie absent at this point. Thank you for confirming. We will move on to our next report, which is the Urbanized Development Commission Meeting, the UDC. I am going to provide that report. We had a few minor revisions to the TIP, which is a transportation improvement program that just reflects scope changes. We approved the Go Sioux Falls MPO 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. It's the metro area's long-range transportation plan. We re-elected Carol Tweet as our chair, and Counselor Pat Starr as our vice chair. We appointed new citizen advisory committee members and technical advisory committee members. And lastly, we were presented a review of the IMS Pavement Management Survey of Minnehaha County Roads, which that company is also the same that does our city survey, where they scan all the roads with the laser trucks. And their overall score for the county was incredibly high, and I don't think they had any roads that were in the fair or poor category. So they were in very good shape. So that was very good to hear. And we did have one joint, I believe. Is that Counselor Kylie? Are you on the line now?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that finishes up that report. The next up is Municipal Ban Task Force. Counselor Jensen, would you be prepared to make that report?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. So we rolled out the Municipal Ban Task Force. We've got a great committee of individuals from all around the community that have very different backgrounds and expertise. So we started our meeting, went around the room, introduced each other to get comfortable, and then started talking about different options that may be beneficial to think about and walk through to see if it is, you know, efficient and effective for maintaining our ban for the next 100 years. So we're just starting that process. HR was in attendance and did a great job. So was Finance. You know, we're just getting started, so more to come. We haven't, our next meeting will be mid-December, and we will have public notice of that. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That concludes our committee and commission reports. Next up is council remarks. Anybody who would like to make any remarks? Anyone on the phone? If not, we'll move on to presentations. We have one presentation today. It's the October 2020 Monthly Financial Report, and that's going to be presented by Tom Huber, our Assistant Director of Finance. Welcome, Tom.
Good afternoon, counselors. Tom Huber with the Finance Office. We gave Sean a deserved break this week, so provide you a brief review of the October Monthly Financial Report. Sean provided a really good rundown of the report in a recent email, tried to hit the highlights and answer questions. As we always start, just kind of cover a few economic statistics that we kind of track for our economy. Employment numbers continue to bounce around, but within a fairly narrow range since the initial decline, as you can see. Currently trailing last year's unemployment on a year-over-year basis by 1.5%. The city has shown continued improvement in the unemployment rate since the beginning of COVID-19. Unemployment stands at 3.4% in September after peaking at 10.5% in April. Pattern closely aligns with statewide numbers, and both the city and state are well below the national unemployment rate, which stands at 7.7%. Little different measure of employment is the ongoing insured unemployment claim trends, which is provided on a state-by-state basis. South Dakota continues to maintain some of the lowest rates in the nation, as you can see, the insured unemployment rate of 0.88%. If you look at the trend over the last year, you could see that the insured unemployment rate certainly continued on the downward trajectory throughout 2020 after the initial spikes earlier this year for both South Dakota in the blue and the national average in the orange. Looking at South Dakota, you will notice that we are or were closing in on pre-pandemic levels for the insured unemployment. Inflation remains very low and at overall healthy levels. Inflation is at 1.2% in October compared to 1.4% in September after bottoming out at nearly zero net inflation earlier this year. If you look at the sectors inside of inflation, the inflationary numbers that are provided, you can see that the negative inflation rate for energy in the green line is, continues to mitigate the overall impact of inflation with the food inflation area being the one that is on the higher end in the red. Looking at our building permits, the city has permitted 573.2 million in building valuations through October of 2020. Year-to-date permits are tracking behind last year by about 123 million. New residential remains strong, with the commercial side weighing down the numbers thus far this year. If you look at the housing side of it, you can see that permits for new housing units are up about 15% from October 2019. The growth, you can see growth in the numbers across all three categories. Single-family permits are 635 units, up 73 over last year. Multifamily permits, up 1,052 units, up 179 from last year. And townhome duplex permits of 340 units are up 9 over last year. Moving on to things that are of more impact directly to the city, our sales tax collections are up 1.9% in October of 2020 versus October of 2019. The 12-month rolling average has continued to decline, has dropped now down to about 0.8% for, through October. These numbers are not too surprising, and I think we've talked about it before, that the last half of last year was very strong, and so we're running up against last year's 8.2% in October. So, and that continues on through the end of the year. So as we've discussed, we may continue to see low to negative growth throughout the end of the year because of, not just the COVID-19 effects, but also, you know, just how strong sales tax ended the year last year. Again, it's all planned for in our forecasting models and in our budget. Entertainment tax is significantly more variable, given the products and services being taxed, and obviously is also much more susceptible to the COVID-19 impacts. October shows an 8.6 decrease over October of 2019, with the 12-month rolling average now at minus 9.2%, although the slope of the line, as you can see, has certainly leveled out over the past few months. Again, this is not unexpected and is accounted for in our forecasting of the entertainment tax fund. Quick look at, these are some of the top 10 industry and industry subsectors based on taxable sales for transactions occurring in September, which are reported to us in October, makes up about six, this, the numbers on this chart make up about 62% of the total taxable sales in October that we received in October. Not surprisingly, some of the sectors continue to struggle a little more than others. But thus far, most have weathered the storm fairly well, and some are actually thriving through this shift in consumer and business spending. Again, we track, it just provides us some general insight as to what is happening with our sales tax collections. Year-to-date property tax revenues remain on pace with budget expectations as we await second-half payments here that will be coming in in November and December. Lodging tax receipts was covered, I believe, in quite a bit of detail last month. So I'll just kind of summarize. The receipts this month are down 26.3% over October 2019, continuing a trend we've seen in recent months. Improved over the lows, but still remain pretty weak due to the impact of COVID-19 and that it's had on the hospitality industry. Again, we did change this chart up a little bit from last time to show it on a consistent basis that we do for sales and entertainment tax on a month-over-month basis. Similar results for the bid tax revenues, which follows the lodging tax pretty close, with October 2020 being down 19.6% over October of 2019, and the 12-month rate is now down 23.4%. And again, both the lodging tax and the bid tax are pass-throughs to us that get passed through to the CVB. But again, it does impact our, some, the CVB that's extremely vital to our economic and health of the city. Want to spend a little more time talking about some changes we made on the general fund reporting pages. We've made some slight modifications to page one of the report to provide a more consistent analysis of year-over-year results. We do it with, both without and with the CARES Act funding, so that we can kind of provide a consistent review of where we've been in the past, how it compares to ongoing run rates, and then what the CARES Act money has actually done to the bottom line. So from a total all-in bottom-line approach, you can see we're running at about 89% for the general fund revenues received year-to-date, which includes the CARES Act funding. Above this total, we've subtotaled out the, and removed the 29.9 million in CARES Act reimbursements that we've received thus far through October to provide a more consistent review of our run rates. This approach shows the general fund at 72% of revenues collected to budget year-to-date, which is slightly below the 75% rate of last year, which we would expect, given sales tax trends. Overall, in fairly good position, given where we could, could be related to the impacts of COVID-19 on our economy. Without the CARES Act funding, we're actually 1 million ahead of last year's collections at this point, and, but still slightly below our budget, our planned budget, which was adopted well before the COVID of early this year, COVID impacts. On the expenditure side, we've done the same thing. We've pushed the CARES Act spending below the line to show what's happening on a consistent basis with prior years. Like revenues, we are tracking at 63% of expenditures on a total year-to-date, which includes the CARES Act budget supplement that you passed recently. The spending will occur coming up in November here now, as we did pay, prepaid those bonds. So we will be removing, removing that from the spending category in 2020 once that occurred for the November report. But without the CARES Act funding, if we remove that from the budget above the line there, you'll see that we're at 72% of budget, again, below last year's run rate of 76%. Fairly consistent with what we're seeing. On the revenue side, City's been able to adapt on the expenditure side. That's, for the most part, the presentation on the monthly report. One item we did want to cover this time around, we did send out, had a press release and did send over, Sean did send over an email on the, on the public safety bonds for the public safety training facility. Overall, we're very pleased with the results. Bonds were sold on October 29th, funded on November 12th. Received five competitive bids, awarded the bid to Citigroup Global Markets at a true interest cost of 2.39% for 20-year bonds. Proceeds of 53.9 million were received. It included, that's 50 million for construction, sets up the required bond reserve, with 3.4 million in the remainder for the underwriter's discount and cost of issuance. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. And by the way, thank you for coming the second week. We had to cancel last week, and for the inconvenience, we apologize. Counselor Erickson, please.
Thank you, Tom. Just a few questions. One is not necessarily related, it's kind of related. Would you happen to know the balance of the Ones Who Falls Fund?
I do not, at this point.
There's anything in that? Yeah, I'm sure it's an Akoff question.
We can send it over, we can find that in no time, but...
Yeah. I was just curious what's left and what the plan is for that, because I know it's finance-related. The other question I have is, what do you anticipate for additional CARES Act money coming? How much and when?
Well, we believe we'll be eligible for the full 41.5 million that the state allotted to the city. We'll get another big draw here in November and into December, January. So I would expect by February, we'd have our whole allotment. We just have to incur the expenditures for this year to get the reimbursement back. So as we incur the expenditures, we file for that reimbursement, so...
And are there any strings attached as far as when that has to be spent?
No, I don't, no. It's a reimbursement for past expenses, so, so the timing on, on actually spending, the funds that we receive, there's no, there's no timeframe. Obviously, we spent 25.2 now in November that you supplemented the budget for to prepaid the bonds.
Right.
So that should leave about 16.3 million, if my math is right, 16.3 million yet to allocate some of that. We have, as in the 29.9 million that we've received at this point, and much of it will be coming.
So the thing, I guess I would just piggyback on that is that I know this council has stated a couple of times that we want to have either some sort of informational or working session or a full list given to us that we can then come back and say to you, this is kind of our priorities and whatever. And so I would just reiterate that again as we move forward and really just providing with us the intent of what those CARES Act funds are supposed to be. I know it's not supposed to be for anything ongoing and one-time expenditures, et cetera, just so we can make the best decision that we are supposed to make. So thank you for the presentation. It's not totally doom and gloom, but it's the best-case scenario dealing in a pandemic and what we're being dealt with. So it could be a lot worse, and I think we're probably better off than a lot of other states and cities. But I think it's also something certainly to watch as we move forward, because I know even this week, I took a handful of calls of businesses that are still really struggling. And so we want to be certainly mindful as we watch through that, that many businesses are still down 40, 50, 60% in those restaurant businesses. And so we know that that's going to, you know, take a hit on our sales tax as well. So, thank you.
Reiterate a little bit on that is I think the city's resiliency of being able to adapt. And we've always said, rather than trying to predict the future, we're better off having a solid plan, adapting to what's coming at us, and taking a balanced approach. And we've been well rewarded for, for current and past leadership and just the, the general attitude of, of the city overall towards making sure that we remain on solid financial, some financial footing.
Yeah. And I appreciate that, because we've got to adapt and pivot and make sure that we pay all of our bills as well, while recognizing that there's a lot of hurting people right now and struggling businesses that have dealt with all of this. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you. Tom, a couple of things. It is nice to hear from you, though, by the way. You could do this every other month or something. Appreciate that. I want to piggyback a little bit on what Counselor Erickson said, and I think the way we need to think about it and look at it, at least from my perspective, is we've spent the CARES Act money, or we're, there is no CARES Act money left. We've done what it's taken, we're being reimbursed for what additional spending there is in November and December, and then we're there. And after that, it's not CARES Act money anymore. It's our money, our reserves for the city. So there aren't requirements on the remaining 16.3 or 1, whatever the number is. And so, am I, I mean, that's kind of the way we should think about it.
It is reimbursing us for our past costs, and so as it's reimbursed that, it's freed up these dollars then to, these are, these are free and clear. And I think one of Sean's things, and I think he might have mentioned it in a message, was that, you know, we, we want to be proactive with this, but we also want to make sure that we're, that we've got the money in hand, that the money is coming in. We know how much we're going to get. I know there's some talk yet about would the city be eligible to get any additional dollars. So we have a pretty complete picture coming into this and make sure that we address this with the council on a, on a comprehensive and kind of knowing, knowing the lay of the land fully before, before we start into this. So we had that one-time opportunity to prepaid those bonds, which we did, which is again, just putting us on even more solid financial footing. But now it's, and Sean, I think, plans to come over in the near future to discuss that. So I would, I'd look for that in the near future.
So is there an opportunity to do, I'll call it this, another Ones Who Falls Fund initiative by making that request to the state? Is there an opportunity, you mentioned that maybe there were additional funds, from what I'm at least reading in the media and talking to appropriators, that they're not necessarily going to be able to invest all of the 1.25 billion? So is there the potential to say we'd like to do another 3.5 million or 5 million to reimburse? Because we have the structure in place, we have the people who are hurting. That seems to me that that would be a top request we would make.
There's always the potential. Again, we're waiting for further information back and still having a dialogue with the state, and Sean's more directly involved in that, so...
I get it.
There'll be more information coming on that, and we'll continue to share as we get information passed along to us.
Sean, if I can, just one other quick point. Will we see any supplement requests or transfers before the end of the year? Are we in pretty good shape by department? That, I'm sure they're moving some things as we approach the end of the year, but at the same time...
We're in good shape by each of the departments. We've made the supplements we needed to make to, to, like on the entertainment tax, to make those whole, some of the capital supplements we needed to do. The funding was available to get them into the capital projects or capital program and a few other areas. So I don't anticipate unless something more dramatic comes up.
As long as the snow stays away.
So the streets budget is in good shape right now. We do a little more predictions to the end of the year, but like we've always said, we got snow and shopping to occur yet.
Thank you.
Questions on the phone? Hearing none. I think I have just one question. So if you take out the, if you put the CARES Act funding to the side, do you expect that we will be using any reserves this year? Or it will be all a turnback of what we did?
On the general fund? I guess, as I thought about it a little bit, I thought we're probably going to be between the ones somewhere. 1 million down, 1 million up. Right now, it's to the upside. We've got a long time to go yet before end of the year. We do have some transfers to make yet, but, so, you know, it could go slightly above that if things go our way. Sales tax holds up well, and snow gives us a breather. We could end up slightly above that, but right now, I'd say between the goalposts of 1 down, 1 up. And again, given everything that we've seen and that we budgeted for using up a lot more than that overall, you know, good, good position to be in.
Absolutely. For what we've been through, that's incredible. Okay. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Next, we will have public comment. Anybody who would like to speak on what we talked about today, of up to five minutes. Welcome, Mr. Weber, and thank you for coming a second time, and sorry for the inconvenience from last week.
It's always true that third time is a charm.
Yeah.
I'm planning on using the overhead projector again, if that would be turned on.
Yep.
Done.
Yep.
That's enough in focus. For the last three months, you've been given this industrial graph. Sixty items of this 10 are from the retail sector. Building materials, general merchandise, food stores, home furniture, eating, drinking places, and remote sellers is within miscellaneous retail. These six items are 73% of retail's total. Another one that's listed up here is business services. The service sector is 21% of the total. I'll show you a graph of that in a minute. Business services is 31% of the service sector. Electric, gas, and sanitary services is 48% of the transportation sector. The transportation sector is 10% of the total. It's been stated this month that six, these 10 represent 62% of the total of your 29% of revenue that comes from the taxable sales or the municipal sales tax. Wouldn't you like to know what the other 38% is? It may be true that this quotation from our Finance Director, but the key industries within the broad sales tax base continue to show strength, which has helped to stabilize and mitigate the impacts that have occurred in more of the impacted industries. That statement may be true, but I think you should see what's going on. If you can rotate that, otherwise people have to stand sideways. This is six out of, well, wholesale trade is one of those top 10 industries, and also is manufacturing. This is a graphical representation of what I've been giving you on a monthly basis, just verbally. You can decide for yourself or see things are growing, way things are going. This is all 12-month rolling growth rate. You can see that some are way below the X-axis, which is the zero line. This is the retail trade sector. As I said, miscellaneous retail includes the remote sellers that has come down from its high watermark earlier in the year. But what's interesting about miscellaneous retail, which I've told you before, some of these others have been quite negative, and granted, they're only a small portion of the 52% that's total retail. But what's interesting... But what's interesting is this miscellaneous retail, which is part of remote sellers, I'll get to in a minute, that retail really isn't in as great shape as you may think it is. This is the most confusing graph. The one color of services for the last three years, there has been a business cycle. And the service sector represents, are the seven largest ones. It's about 90% of the total of the services sector. But during most of this year, it's been a downward trend of the business cycle as far as the 12-month rolling growth rate. I would like to make a comment on what the Finance Director has been using, what I've underlined and read. He has only used one of the three federal government classifications of non-store retail. That's only 90% of the total. That's just a matter of definition. I have asked him about this several months ago, but he has not changed his presentation at all. So, this is being underrepresented. We're using the same statistical source. I think I first showed you this 2019, last year about November this time. This is retail trade, 12-month rolling growth rate. The top line is all of retail trade. The area between the two lines is a statistical representation of remote sellers. And the red line is your brick-and-mortar stores' 12-month rolling growth rate for the city of Sioux Falls. The city government is getting all of the revenue, but I think, I'm not an economic prognostication, but brick-and-mortar retail growth, based upon using this information data source, was about 2% month-by-month all of last year. You can see that it's gone up and down a little bit this year, but it's still the difference between the two as far as our internet sales that are now taxed and are reported. And you can find this data in the state, 1,000-page state report that comes out every month, is currently about 3.5 to 3.7%. So, local brick-and-mortar stores have improved a little bit, but my expectations were not for brick-and-mortar to be holding a line in this pandemic. And the last one I have, this is a state document that's on the State Department of Revenue website. They do not report something for the city of Sioux Falls. This is a statewide city sales tax report by remote sellers.